Great, welcome. I'd like to call to order the Concord Public Schools Public Hearing on the FY21 Budget. And I'm going to hand it over to Jared to go through the budget for us.
Alright.
CPS, yes. While he's pulling it up, I'll just tee up that the committee here has seen this superintendent's recommended budget once. This is a public hearing for any public questions and also a chance for all of us to just go through it again and make sure we have a good understanding of it. Looks good up here, Jared. It was.
Yeah, it was kind of a slideshow.
Yeah, it was a second ago.
Not here, though.
That's okay.
We did fuss around with the projection, but because nothing was showing. Everything should be coming out of that wall socket. Which was labeled number two, as I recall.
Is it on there? Yeah. Just like that?
This one is showing.
It's okay with me at that point.
Oh, actually, the screens don't have the side column. Will you be zooming in on one in particular?
Yeah, I'm zooming on that one.
Okay, so that's what they have.
Okay, so on TV it's got that.
It's going to be a different way unfortunately, so it could be reset, but...
But the arrows are not changing in this one.
Oh.
Oh, you can't move it.
Oh, oh, you can't move it.
That's weird.
Yeah. That was going through the wireless to get to it. And it's also collecting on that one, but it must've been set. We can try to do that from one.
Why don't we try to drag it again?
I mean, that's set up correctly.
Oh, it is, okay.
Get it to that one, not through the system.
Okay.
And it's setting it out a second way, I think we can just reset it.
Let's do that, because this is a hearing, we want to make this as visible as we can. If it means a delay of a minute or two.
To be able to move your slide. Exactly.
Okay.
Which I can on that.
Sorry for the delay, for those watching. We're going to deal with our technical difficulties. Right.
We don't start actually going, "I might want to use our," we're taking...
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Mark.
Beautiful. Okay. Take two, Jared.
Take seven.
You're on.
I think all of you could present this at this moment. So CPS budget, kind of just take it through the whole presentation again. So if you remember, we did a zero-based budget process, started really this summer. We looked at three to five years' worth of everything, from legal to salaries, to class sizes. We really took a deep dive into class sizes as well as caseloads. We looked into contract services, tuitions, everything above this budget. So the superintendent's recommended budget for FY21 is $40,782,874, which is a 3.54% increase. It's actually been a change since the last time I presented this. We noticed that during the FinCom meeting, that there was an error in one of our formulas. The error was in the requested total, the delta stayed the same. So it's about 12,000. So if you remember before, it was a 3.57% increase. That 12,000 made it down to a 3.54% increase. I don't know how I missed it, but it's now corrected. So this chart breaks down the FY21 recommended budget by DESI 1,000 function. We compared it to FY19's budgeted versus the actuals. FY20's budgeted, FY21's requested, the delta and the percentage difference. There are some large budget drivers, such as in district leadership and administration, instructional leadership, and programs in other districts, and I will go over those in the next slide. So instead of breaking down the budget drivers by DESI functions, I broke them down into 37 different expense types. There's 48th of the region, so there's less here at CPS. Some of these expense types includes contingency, contract services, employee separation, equipment, fees, legal, teacher longevity, et cetera. And there's approximately 16 different salary categories. For something to be a budget driver, it had to have a budget difference from the previous year of over 60,000. The first is salary admin. While it shows we are up almost 27%, this is mainly due to the hiring of a middle school team chair. Aids salary is up mainly due to steps. The principals and assistant principals line is up 423,000, because we had three elementary school principals. They make up the bulk of this amount. All three assistant principals were hired within, and their teaching position was not that far. Which is the reason why the next line, teacher salary, is only increasing 1.59%. If you include the monies that were transferred to the principals line, teacher salaries would be at 767,000, or 3.49%. The aides, aides are up mainly due to step and step and column. Same with the tutors. And I'm jumping around, my apologies. So, let me see. Skip the page. So as part of the 10-year bus recycle replacement plan, we are requesting two new buses this year for CPS. So actually, believe it or not, it's actually three. The electric bus was budgeted for FY20. We're not going to get that money till next summer. Therefore, next summer, the money doesn't actually roll over, but we actually did budget for the electric bus in this year's budget. So that actually reflects three leased buses, instead of two. I've been saying two, but it was actually three.
Sorry, when you say "in this year's budget," it's in FY21?
It's in FY20. We're not going to be getting... So there's going to be a $39,000 savings, give or take, in this year's budget.
From FY20, got it.
From FY20, because we're not going to get the bus until FY21 this summer.
Okay, so we're bumping that for...
So we're bumping it up.
Got it.
Special education tuitions are showing an increase of 312,711, but that is misleading. We are currently projecting seven less students than we currently have, but our circuit breaker offset in FY21 is 299,000 less than we had in the FY20 budget. There are mainly two reasons for this. One, less kids are going out, so less reimbursement from the state. And we anticipated having at least 150,000 of carryover from FY19 to plug the vault for this year's budget. We do not expect that to happen for this year's budget. Utilities, as you know, are quite unpredictable. The increase is more in line with FY19 actuals than FY20 budgeted. We're keeping a close eye on FY20's numbers. And when doing the zero-based utility budget, we compare five years' worth of actuals and look for any outliers. So this is more of a budget, sort of a budget correction a little bit. To offset the budget drivers, we identified 234,574 cost savings. Our contract services decreasing 166,769, but between special ed and maintenance, we are down 258,891. In both departments, we are doing more in-house with our own employees. Special education transportation is going up 65,247, and our district-wide tuition contract is 26,445. We're seeing overall reduction in supplies due to this tuition contract. The decrease in clerical is more of a budget correction and not a reduction in FTEs.
Does that mean that that figure has been reassigned elsewhere?
Correct, it was more of a correction. The early retirement incentive savings, we are projecting approximately 394,659 in savings this year from the 17.5 people who took advantage of the early retirement. So what this is basically showing is that if these people were still here, this would be the salaries, and this is the savings. FTEs, I broke the FTEs into 12 different categories. This budget includes approximately 375.59 FTEs. Some administration, clerical, HR, maintenance staff are split between the region and CPS. This does not include transportation staff. I wanted to show in addition to the general fund, we also have offsets in our revolving accounts and grants. So here is the total offsets. The preschool tuition is new this year. It is money that is collected for preschool that was going to the town the previous years, and we will offset salaries towards that. So here's the special ed tuitions for the CPS. They're in two different lines this year, non-public tuitions and collaborative. So the total CPS tuitions in the budget is 2297,000, but then we have offsets. We did offsets in the actual budget line, and we are showing expecting 651,000 in circuit breaker offset and $400,000 in IDEA. Still preliminary numbers, but this is a good estimate. We wanted to show how many out-of-district tuitions there are as of 12/10. We still have 27 out-of-district students, and we're projecting 20 for net share at this time. Very fluid number, though. In addition, we wanted to show some benchmarking. So we use, what is it?
ClearGov.
ClearGov. And we had 13 comparables. Here's the districts that we sort of compare ourselves to. The first one is the FY18 per people expansions versus our peer groups. On ClearGov, they go back 10 years. So I just wanted to show a current 2018 audited version.
For clarity here, does this pull out K8 numbers from the regional dual-town ones?
No, so this is strictly K8.
Right.
Yep. And we're comparing ourselves to many that are pre-K12. So the comparables there are Lincoln and Sudbury? Yep. And Carson. And here are the instructional services, first student, which is the 2,000 series. And you should know that the 2,000 series is approximately 76% of our budget at CPS. Jared, could you just remind us what's in that 2,000 series? Sure. All of our professional teaching staff, curriculum, supplies, for the most part. Tutors are in there. I believe aides are in there. So pretty much all of our teaching staff.
What was the budget percentage of that?
76...
70.
For the 2,000 series, 76% of the budget. And here's our FTEs versus our peer groups. I think when we do the budget book, we'll show it to scale, so these numbers make a little bit more sense. And then our students and teacher ratio. And now we're going into the locations. So CPS has seven budget locations: preschool, district-wide elementary, Alcott, Thoreau, Willard Middle School, and district-wide Ripley. The following seven slides summarizes the expense categories by location. The preschool budget location decreased 14.03%, mainly due to the $140,000 preschool offset that is in the budget for this year. As I said, we collect 140K in preschool tuition. In years past, this money went to the town. Now this money is coming to us. In addition, we reduced contract service line, because we can do more within. And the decrease in the aides is more of a budget correction here. And it's actually a 5.3% increase over FY19 actuals for the aides.
Jared, can you remind us when the CPS side begins to take preschool money as opposed to going to the town? Is that for fiscal '20?
Fiscal year '20. So our current fiscal year. So we did not plan on that monies for FY20, so it's going to be this as a contingency this year.
So indeed, it might be something that would relate to a carryover.
No, we will offset our staff this year in that we won't carry any monies over in that revolving account.
Got it, thank you.
District-wide elementary. The district-wide elementary location is increasing 26.87%. This is because we moved all the special education tuitions to district-wide. This equates to a 475,000 reduction in this location. So you can see it right down. The Alcott, overall, the Alcott school is increasing 3.79%. Special ed contract services are down 13.3%, and this is due to the aides line in FY21. The line that may jump off the page is the principal-assistant-principal line, and that is due to the hiring of the assistant principal. But for that reason, teachers are only going up 2.92% here. Overall, Thoreau is increasing 3.01%. You see a pattern here with the special ed contract services. They are down almost 53% from FY20's budget amount. Same story with the principals line and the teachers line. There was also savings through attrition in the teachers line as well. Willard is increasing 1.58%. Again, special ed contract services are down, in this case over 48%. The professional development line decreased because we had money in there last year for Wilson training. And again, the assistant principals line is going up in the teachers. There's some savings through attrition as well in teachers here. The middle school is actually only increasing 1.54%. Contract services are down. We hired a team chair, which you're seeing. For that reason, the salary admin line is going up 233%. And then tuitions were also, believe it or not, in the middle schools as well, and we moved that out to a central line as well. And then district-wide Ripley, obviously went up with all the tuitions. 21.74% increase. We also increased our contingency, 25,000. We had 125 last year. My recommendation was to increase it a little bit more. Contract services are up mainly due to the beginning tuition contracts I talked about before, and special ed transportation. The clerical is also a budget correction. And you can see that tuitions down here at the bottom is the total amount of 1.2 million there. And in the line item budget, it has the offsets. So that includes the offsets. And that is a quick, brief presentation on CPS. Any more questions?
We should probably give an update on the Finance Committee's guideline discussion.
Yep, I'm going to go back to that.
Actually, can I just make one comment because I'm paging on your slide? First of all, thank you again for this. Back to your very first slide where you went through the zero-based budget process.
Yeah.
I just want to point this out and clarify, because the question has come up a couple times in different venues, in terms of what the zero-based budget is, and did we really zero-base again after the first year? And so I just want to point out and let you clarify.
Sure.
Is this truly zero-based budgeting the second year as well?
Every line started at zero, from salaries to teachers. Obviously, we have contract commitments, but every teacher that we have is justified. It's spelled up and built up. All of our supply lines, same thing, they really started at zero. Tell us what you need, given itemized amount of exactly what goes into those lines. Utilities, again, we went through, five years' worth of actuals. Made some corrections to what we were projecting last year. Tuitions, went through every single kid. And contract services as well, that's why you're seeing a lot of decreases in the contract services line for special ed. We're doing more within. We hired some more special ed staff that was planned after the savings that we had going into this year. So yes, everything, they're not, I'm going to say this, there are not many districts that do it the way that we do it. And that's why it takes three, four months to build, but it's well worth it. Everything's documented. Next year, at this time, I can go back and if something's over budget, I can say, "Hey, we didn't budget this, but you want to make a transfer from another line that you might not need this year," something like that. So truly, everything was built.
That's great, thank you. That's a huge time commitment, and clearly it's worth it, because this budget feels like it is pinpoint exactly what we need and want. Thank you.
Yes. And I meant to mention this, my apologies. So currently, we are, so here is the delta. We're about $97,000 higher.
That's a live board.
Oh, yes. So we are $97,000 above the FinCom guideline. They made a correction. It was originally $50,000 more than that, or $53,000 more than that. They made it at their last meeting and dropped that guideline, $53,000. So currently at the CPS, we are $97,000 over.
They raised the guideline.
They raised it.
Right.
Closed the delta.
Right, drop the delta, raise the guideline. Yes.
So this is actually should have been updated.
Great. Good, thank you.
Can you remind us what that current guideline number is right now?
Yes, it is 1 million, if you subtract 97,000, so it's about 1,100...
No, no, it's...
295.
Yes, 50 higher than that. So 1,292, 295.
It's 50 higher than that.
50,000 higher than that.
It's 1,295,000, sorry.
And expressed as a percentage, Jeremy?
Probably now closer to 33.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? No?
Well, just one for me. Can you speak a little bit to knowns and unknowns in contingency? And what I mean by that is, some of contingency monies is probably much more predictable than others. Can you give us a sense of that?
Number one would be tuitions. That might be, you know, students moving over the summer and we have to hire a new teacher. Tutors.
So that'd be in the highly predictable category, but still unknown.
Still unknown, some, you know, security. What is some unknown?
It's really the staffing, unknowns.
No, that's very helpful right there.
Registrations over the summer. Kindergarten, we don't have silent numbers until the spring.
Sure.
It's staffing related.
Anything else from committee members? I would open to public questions or comments? Okay.
Make a motion.
That's it? Okay.
To return the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about that?
Just this, before we close out. People who are watching this, they would find this on the district website.
Correct.
And just to clarify our process. We meet again a week from now, and that's when we will vote our final recommendation of the budget to move forward. So this is still the superintendent's recommended budget. We will discuss, have any debate, and vote on our final budget that we're supporting next week.
Correct.
Then all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And good timing to open the public hearing on the regional budget. Come on. Alright, good timing. We just closed the Concord budget public hearing, so good timing for the regional one. Is David coming? Yes. We'll give it a minute before we open the next public hearing for our vice chair.
Just in a minute, if you have. I don't know that it's obvious how to find these presentations. They were emailed to me as links. But I went in today, right now, during the presentation to try to find them. It's not at all obvious. I went back to my email and either the link that had been emailed to me. So that was how I was able to, that's how I would find them.
Okay, got it, thank you. They are, for anybody listening and wondering, they are linked from our agenda. So if you go to meetings...
No. The things that are linked to the agenda are the strict, you know, thousands.
Oh, it has the slides at the end of that document.
It's also online under the Finance page. I think it's in a number of locations.
Okay. Thank you. They're not.
100.
It was in mine.
Yeah, it is linked to the agenda and the line items. The whole presentation is there.
Yeah, that's what I had. That's what I was thinking.
I don't like it.
Just a presentation down all the way to the...
Looks like we're... We'll check after. Let me just see.
We talked to a couple of listeners, we're sharing more time.
We'll give it a couple minutes. Exactly. Although, having been through the days where people said, I agree about the budget, I feel like, well, this is a good statement of trust people feel in the administration that is right now. It's a different world from where we were seven years ago.
Oh, it's okay.
I'll put that down in a little bit, just keep me going. Do chi? Yeah, we don't get much in benefits for this job. The rest of us are low maintenance.
Do you want to make these copies for tomorrow's building committee?
That'd be awesome.
When I say me, I mean everybody.
Yeah, she couldn't print that, you know, I don't know how we might only have five or six people there, but we should probably make fifteen, twenty, by fifteen, fifteen, probably fine. Yeah, you work, she says mine.
By the time technology works, we should.
I know, exactly.
Well, why don't we give it four minutes and start at seven-ten?
Yeah, we wait much longer.
Yeah, we started.
Well, yeah, as soon as this comes up, start.
We're needed on the screen, because that's the only way anybody can see it on TV.
So it's there now? I know, I was just thinking that.
When we got here, all three were down.
Oh. Could we, yeah. We do, well, we're waiting for this. Yeah, let's let her get her update.
Not called to order yet, though.
Does that really matter? Since we're waiting for this anyway? Yeah.
Although we need Mark.
Right, to get us.
Yeah.
Amy, we're debating letting you go before all this, if we can get it queued up, just so you don't have to sit through so much to wait if you want to. But hold off a minute because we also need Mark to queue up that, so.
Because on that screen, I just can't see.
Yeah, I think that, that's set to the wrong input, that's the last one.
Rachel had her slides up, I thought it was just Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Maybe first English?
If you can.
Yeah, well, it's up to you, do you want to do that?
I'm here, David, so that'll look in seven.
Oh, perfect. Hey. Wait a few minutes.
Amy, do you mind waiting? I think we should do the hearing, because
Okay.
We're waiting for you.
Sorry for the delay, I'd like to bring the Concord-Carly Regional School Committee budget public hearing to order, and we'll turn it over to Chair Stitt.
So like the CPS budget, the regional budget was a zero-based budget process. We started this summer, many, many players involved, all the principals, department chairs, who did the three to five years' worth of actuals and built everything from the ground up. We really stressed this year staffing, as well as caseloads. We looked at all of our contract services and special ed, tuitions, absolutely everything, and built everything from the zero up. The superintendent's regional recommended budget for FY twenty-one is thirty-five million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five, which is two point two, two point one eight percent higher than FY twenty's school committee-approved budget. If you exclude the debt, the increase is two point eight three percent, or eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine. This chart breaks down the recommended budget by DESI one thousand function. We compare the FY nineteen budget, the transferred budget, FY nineteen actuals, FY twenty's budgeted, FY twenty's requested, the difference in the percentage delta. There are some large drivers, such as in district leadership and administration, instructional leadership and fixed assets, and some large reductions in programs with other districts. So instead of breaking down the budget drivers by DESI function, I broke them down into forty-eight different expense categories. Some of these expense types included athletics, banking, contingency, contract services, debt, employee separation, insurance, OPEB, PD, et cetera. In addition, there were seventeen, approximately seventeen different salary categories. For something to be a budget driver, it had to have a difference of sixty thousand from the previous year. And the first here is the guidance. Guidance staff increased from nine FTEs to ten FTEs after FY twenty budget was formed, but through some attrition, the additional FTE and the projected steps and lanes are only causing an increase of sixty-one thousand. There's an increase in contract services, but mainly due to the increased amount in special ed transportation and the ink toner contracts. You will see, sort of spread throughout, but there will be, there is a reduction in supplies. As part of our ten-year bus replacement cycle, we are requesting two new buses next year, we will be leasing those. Our insurance lines are increasing approximately two point five six percent in FY twenty-one. This is partly due to some of our employees taking advantage of the high deductible plan option the town introduced in FY eighteen. This plan limits long-run growth in healthcare spending by encouraging beneficiaries to price shop from non-emergency services. We did get our estimated increase for next year for health insurance is roughly seven percent, so that's pretty good. So seven percent increase for next year overall. And the teachers are going up, seven point two one percent. This is all steps and lanes. We are in a contract year, as well as in the CPS as well. And then salary tutors are up fourteen point eight four percent. This is mainly due to an increase of two point oh tutors that was budgeted, different from last year's, as well as we are now budgeting for some clubs that are taking place after school. To offset the budget drivers, we identified six hundred and seventy-five thousand in cost savings. At this time, our charter school and school choice numbers are down. We have approximately two charter, two FTEs, full-time equivalents, in charter, and four choice assessments. So it's a net decrease of sixty, almost sixty-four thousand. Due to all the programmatic changes, kids aging out, and tuitions that students are coming in with from Carlyle. In the Concord Middle School, tuitions are actually decreasing five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And lastly, debt on the high school is going down, almost ninety-eight thousand. Early retirement incentive savings, we are projecting approximately a hundred and thirty thousand from savings this year from the six people who took advantage of the retirement incentive. Here's a current FTE slide. I broke the FTEs into fifteen different categories. This budget includes approximately two hundred and four FTEs. Some administration, clerical, HR, maintenance staff are split between the two districts, and this also doesn't include transportation. One thing that I did want to highlight, and that is in athletics, that big number there includes our coaches, which we do not have an FTE on. So that's why it looks like such a large amount for two people. So I can, I'll back that out. In addition to the general fund, we have about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in offsets. The first is the MECO grant, about a hundred and ninety thousand, and we offset salaries. And then our parking revolving account, we take fifty thousand from that and offset our campus monitor salaries. Special ed tuitions, we budgeted two million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty in special ed tuitions. Most of those are non-public tuitions. And then we also had some offsets, we identified about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand in offsets. To date, we have forty-one students out of district, and at this time, we are projecting thirty-five for next year. Very fluid number. Next is our benchmarking, which I was asked to show. We have eleven comparables for Concord-Carly. The ones that really are a nine through twelve would be Dover Sherborne and Lincoln Sudbury.
Actually, it's just LS.
It is just LS, yeah. Here's our PPE versus our peer groups. And this is something that I mentioned in my last presentation, that I will see what I can do for the budget book and make this more to scale, make these numbers really, make a little bit more sense, especially when we get to the FTEs, comparing it to the enrollment. Here is our two thousand series, our instructional services per student versus peer group. We have, in the two thousand series, there's about fifty-two percent of our budget is in this. All of our teaching staff, curriculum staff, supplies, et cetera, are in this. And then the FTEs, not very helpful. And then our student-to-teacher ratio. And then our total teacher-per-student versus peer group, our number is about point oh eight five. So if you remember my last presentation before we started the budget process, I stated that the new reporting standards had a positive impact on the district's OPEB funding schedule. Specifically, new governmental accounting standards require an entry-age normal method compared to the previously used projected unit credit method. The new standards have improved the district's funding progress. However, underfunded FY nineteen and FY twenty OPEB contributions will have a negative impact on future valuations. And we anticipate the completion of the June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, OPEB valuation by January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. As you know, OPEB estimates are highly volatile because they rely on estimating future health care costs, the healthcare regulatory environment, investment returns, demographic changes, and participant mortality. Accordingly, the FY twenty-two funding amount is subject to change as a result of the June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen valuation. The table, this table details the district's OPEB funding schedule as of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. An FY twenty-one contribution of five hundred and forty-eight thousand is required to meet the actuarially determined twenty thirty-eight, a hundred percent funded target date. District administration recommends level funding, OPEB contributions at five fifty through two thousand and twenty-two in order to mitigate the underfunding in FY nineteen and FY twenty, which is still less than FY twenty's contribution. And here are our approximate costs for health insurance in FY twenty-one. It's only a slight increase over FY twenty budgeted. And again, we're looking at about a seven percent increase, I'm hearing right now. And then this is pretty self-explanatory, but debt is going down, approximately ninety-seven thousand for next year. So unlike the Concord public school side, the regional side is responsible for projecting revenue. The following list of items is the revenue we receive before we figure out the total assessments to the two towns. Based on the projections we had to make this time last year, which is about two months before the initial governor's budget is released, we are expecting a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollar increase in chapter seventy and almost a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase in chapter seventy-one transportation. We are also recommending we decrease our E and D contribution by fifty thousand. I'm expecting our interest to stay the same, I'm expecting the interest to stay the same, but a fifty thousand dollar decrease in miscellaneous revenue. This year is the last year we'll be getting laptop payments that has since gone away. I'm also projecting a ten thousand dollar decrease in rental, based on some actuals, and then a four hundred and seventy-seven dollar increase in charter reimbursement. Overall, I project that we will receive three million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars in additional revenue other than assessments. Based on the regional agreement, assessments are dictated by the October first enrollment. According to the October first enrollment, Concord had seventy-six point one percent of the enrollment share, and Carlyle had twenty-three point nine. This is an increase of point eight five percent for Concord's overall October first number. The operating budget does not include debt or transportation. Therefore, we break out the revenue into three sections. The operating budget is thirty million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. We then reduce that amount by other state in local revenue that I went over in the previous slide. Therefore, the amount to assess above the chapter seventy in local revenue is twenty-seven million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four. Underneath that box, transportation is then broken out, and the amount to assess above the chapter seventy-one reimbursement is sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven. And then the last box is debt, and that's how we break that out. Shown here is the assessments without debt. Below is assessments with decreased debt service. I think these numbers speak for themselves, but the, we do not yet know the Carlyle guideline number, but we are approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars below the original Concord Finance Committee guideline.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you favor? Commend Jared and Laurie for the clarity. The way you presented it makes it look easy.
I actually, as I listened to it, I was like, wow, this comes down like, twenty minutes, so much work.
Four months. So thank you.
Yes.
Yes, anyways.
Thank you. I'm on favor.
Aye.
Can we get seven twenty-three, do we need to take a quick break since we?
The agenda says seven?
The agenda says seven thirty.
All right, we'll be right back.
Yes, five-minute break, or seven-minute break.
I'd like to bring the Concord-Carlyle Regional School District Committee to order. Please note we're being recorded.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order. Welcome.
You've waited far too long on a school night. Amy, would you give us an update about the goings-on at high school?
She did make me feel better. She's still, my mic's dead. She is staying for the project she's working on, so she's very content and patient.
So C.C. beat Bedford at Thanksgiving football game. And then Will Chapin won the NXR Northeast Championship in 2065 at Nationals. The winter sports just begun. And the Spring Musical has been announced, the 95 Musical. And there's going to be an improv show this Friday. And ICHF Fest auditions are this week, and that's like the big music festival that the radio station puts on. And then just the source of student stress right now is like winter break is coming up, so like attacks are piling up, and then exams right after that, so.
I can attest to that.
Isn't that fun?
Yeah. And Amy, the production of The Laramie Project, of which we heard some in here, was amazing. Can you tell us a little bit about it from your perspective?
Yeah, so I was the stage manager for that. So it was very like cool to see it all come together at the end between when it first began, auditions, which I was able to see, take notes on, and then all come together, all the rehearsals and all the techniques stuff until the actual performances. That was really cool to see every background piece because I asked stage manager, like I saw like all the little details that go into it. So I think that was really cool to see, and then the show itself is such an important show, that it was like nice to see how people received that.
And not to see it, you had a lot to do with it coming together so well as stage manager.
So I can tell you in public what I told you before in private, that my wife and I have attended the opening night. And I think the best compliment you could have gotten from my wife was that when the show, when the play was over, she said, "It didn't feel like a high school play, it felt like theater."
Thank you, yeah.
And I think that says really a lot about everything.
It really does. It's amazing.
I would agree. It's extraordinary. It's just, you know, it's a very charged topic and a lot of dialogue. I thought it was, we had a nice chat.
I don't have a report tonight because I'm on for next week, but just a pitch for all the, it's concert season. So last week, we enjoyed the choral concert of the middle school with this really great interlude by the high school select groups. Tomorrow, Thursday night is the instrumental groups, grades four through eight. And Saturday night is the annual Prism concert for the high school band, which is a favorite for me, so.
And it's a fundraiser for the program.
Absolutely. That's, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Tickets needed for the Prism?
Yes.
Yes.
They're reserved seats, and they're going fast. They're actually.
They're actually going fast.
They're going fast.
Somebody's listening and they wanted to go, where would they go on the, where on the website?
I don't know where on the website.
It should be on the music webpage.
Yeah.
Okay. Music webpage at the.
If you Google CHS Prism Concert, you'll have it.
Ticket stage or something like that.
Yes, their ticket stage.
Thank you. Any public comments? Saying none. Chairs and liaison reports. Anybody have updates? When do we start?
Yes, I do.
Add them to the table.
So from CPAC, Concord-Carlyle CPAC, last board meeting, that was in November. CPAC parents just, I just wanted to report that CPAC parents were very happy with the level of communication that has been pushed out to families about events and things that are happening for, in CPAC and for students of special education. People are definitely showing up to those events, so thank you. It's been very successful. There were 13 parents, 10 husbands at the board meeting, so people are aware that they can get supportive information there coming up. CPAC also asked that a board member comes out to the inclusion talk that just happened this week. So I came out and sat through that presentation, and will report on that to the administration also. Will bring information to any of the school community members if they're interested. Also, next meeting for the CPAC will be coming up January 23 at 12:30 at the Hunt Recreation Conference Room. And one more thing that CPAC members are asking, they're asking if the school committee may ask more questions and updates on special education at the school committee meetings. And that's it. Thank you.
Cynthia?
I was just going to advertise the Sustainable Concord Open House, but it's tomorrow from 4:30 to 7:30 at the CHS, the Concord-Carlyle High School cafeteria. You can drop in for 10 minutes or stay for as long as you want.
Great, thank you. Evol, anything?
Nope. Well, we had the policy subcommittee, but we'll talk about.
We'll be talking about that.
Well, we should just probably touch base briefly on the fact that we were at the Finance Committee meeting a week or so ago now. It's all blurring. Or really their guidelines meeting, when they set their new guidelines. As we talked about before, we'll be voting our final budgets next week. A few of us were at the town meeting coordination meeting this past Saturday with a preview of what's coming up in terms of warrant articles at town meeting. And it was, I'd say, a smooth preview. Laurie and Jared went through our kind of high-level numbers and what the warrants look like they'll be, and there were no questions for us. So that all went really well. And then I would just update from the League's Education Committee. They are hosting a coffee and conversation.
I don't know if it's open to the public, but.
It's in a private home, and it's just the League. That's tomorrow, right?
Yes, well, then I'm just updating on the League.
Yes, there you go.
And what they're doing. And they're hosting a coffee for League members tomorrow afternoon. And so a few of us from the building committee will be there. This is to discuss the building project. So I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Yep. We also presented to Carlyle. Went well, good conversation and discussion about the budgets. So we're moving our way through the process. Thank you very much.
Do you know when they set their guidelines?
I don't.
Soon?
You have any idea?
When Carlyle sets their. It's before Christmas, but not much, so what is next two weeks?
All right.
Comes with a bow.
They're meeting, by the way, I should say, they're meeting tonight in Board Selectment. So as you call it, so on the agenda, I can't make it, but some other school committee people are there, and it's on the agenda.
To tag on to that, because we aren't there, I do like the chair note of the potential parking warrant article. So while we're not there to share it, it should be on their radar, because I did see that conflict in the agenda late last week.
Yeah, let me, one thing that we have, I think we've ameliorated the problem of co-determinous town meetings.
Oh, we did.
Carlyle's going to take up the budget on Monday night. The school items on Monday night. We will, we will take up the school budget items on Tuesday night.
But if they're amended, then we're in a fight. If the warrant articles in Concord are amended, which happens sometimes.
Interesting.
Yeah, they will be, Carlyle's going first? Because we then have another, because this happened a couple of years ago, and they had to almost have another town meeting.
Did you learn anything? So I know we're going to talk about it one week later, but in the meeting you had where they reviewed all the articles, what's the competition with capital? Obviously, the CPS, right?
In Concord, you mean?
Yeah.
I think the best answer is they made sure that there was no debate on any of these. But we didn't get the sense, if I'm correct, that one capital item was going to heavily pressure another. That didn't loom up into the.
So there's lots of work.
Yeah, there's the town budget, there's CPC, there's the Juro. There's money being spent on the Juro land. There's the roads, the annual roads. That's part of the, that's part of the town budget.
Just their, their school budget, but that's not a huge.
No, I don't mean operationally.
Okay, okay.
Well, I mean, they're doing a fuel depot.
But not an extra.
Yeah, nothing, nothing huge. Okay, so we did have one item, of course.
They forgot something. I just wanted to let all of us know and the public that on the 19th, 9:30 in the morning, we're going to have a subcommittee, a policy subcommittee meeting. First item on the agenda, we will discuss a normally existing in our policy manual now, creating a civil rights and hate crime policy. So if somebody in the public has interest to come and speak about and stuff, that would be.
That's good, thank you. We have one piece of correspondence at the region, which was an inquiry about the cause to rent the auditorium. And they pointed to the proper place to determine that. Did we do anything to see?
That was it?
So new business, first reading of school committee policies. We'll go through these with some description, and if there's anything, we'll do a consent agenda. If there's anything anybody wants to pull up.
Well, this isn't a vote tonight anyways, just for reading.
We don't vote in?
No, we do first reading in the next.
Very quickly, I want to pull out from any consent agenda file J I C J. Because there's no explanation of what's happening to this article, and we actually recommend, the subcommittee recommends to. And we actually recommend, the subcommittee recommends to put it out, cancel it totally, remove it from the manual. It's not here. We discussed, it's just doubling an existing. It's just an oversight. We discussed with Mrs. Wessler. She agrees with it. MAC will cancel it. So we're not doing anything, that is not in the manual. I just want, it somehow doesn't show here that we canceled it.
Right, so we were gonna, I'm open to feedback here. In the past, we've gone through each one during the discussion portion of the first reading. We could talk to exactly what Evol's bringing up, so you would understand what the changes were.
Right.
And then the second reading would include more of a consent agenda approach where just anything people want to file. So no, you're totally right. That's exactly what we need to let people know.
So is J I, just for clarification, is J I C G, is that in the manual now?
It is in the manual, only where they...
Anything you want to drop it out.
So you want to delete it?
Yes.
So we would vote on deleting it?
Correct. It's just, it's just precisely the same.
So this will be on our, when we do, when we do the second round of votes?
In fact, tonight, we'll hear more about why it's unnecessary.
So I just want to make sure it's on there for next time.
And let's be jumped, jumped to the second one there, file B D F A, school councils. Because here there is a, actually, I think from all the other articles, this is the only one that has ingrained something that can be perceived as a big change. If you look at number four, formulation of school improvement plan that may be implemented only after review and approval by the previous text hours reads by the school committee. And the new one is saying by the superintendent. Okay? Which is as if it's a big change. It is not. So first of all, it was changed by MAC according to a change in the Massachusetts law. But if you see in reference, legal reference, 71, code 59C, is actually reading the superintendentiary review and approved the plan after consultation with the school committee. You know, and it goes, so at the end of the day, it's just a procedural change and not, I think it's not a real change. At the end of the day, it will be brought by superintendent, maybe by the superintendent's choice whether principal will present it or the superintendent will present it, but...
So we'll see.
Your point is that we'll still see it.
We have to approve it to the superintendent. Superintendent has to approve it. But that's state law change and we don't have much to, we cannot actually override state.
Do we actually vote on it? Or do we just hear about it and make comments?
If it's consultation, then no, we hear about it.
So if we vote about it, I think we have to vote about it because we're changing our manuals.
Oh, and the policy...
We have to vote to change the policy. We don't have to vote on the school improvement plan.
We stop, we will not in the future have to vote on it.
Vote on the school improvement. That makes sense.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Can I ask a favor? Because I'm looking on the DESI website and it says, "Each school improvement plan shall be submitted to the school committee for review and approval every year." So if somebody could just verify what the law is.
Well, the law is in 51. I actually did and it definitely showed the change, but we can...
Okay, if we could just double check that, because I'm not saying that this is right. It could be updated as well.
What are you looking at, DESI?
I'm looking at doe.mass.edu.
So if nothing else, if there are conflicts, we need to know about them.
Right. So instead of DESI memos, documents, it's a...
Yeah, it's a question of function.
There's some of their things stay up longer than I should.
I definitely agree. So it's just a, that's why...
Evol, have you reviewed the actual Mass General law?
I did.
Yes.
You can trust me that I will not easily relinquish control to the superintendent if I need to.
Try to forget I said that.
It's coming from me and then you're to say it.
I kind of figured that wasn't...
Everything's been vetted.
I should follow, Jerry.
All the rest of the changes really are, just we added references, we added cross-references, we added, we added the word vaping. It was aerosol and vaporizer. And we put into parentheses vaping just to make it short, because that's what is being used today. But all the other things, there are no, no changes there.
Nothing else substantial.
Is there any expectation that whatever the Board of Health ultimately decides to, to vote on for their policy on tobacco and vaping in town, that it's not gonna have an effect on our policy?
I don't think it will have an effect on our policy because in schools, we will actually ban it always. Both the staff, so the difference is we have, we have it in three different places. We have it in general, and then we have it in staff, and then we have it in studios. What we try to do is to have them all, because we updated down to MAC from different policies we had before. So now everybody, all those three, we use precisely the same language. But if nothing to do with, at the end of the day, in school and on school buses and school territory and school events, I think we will always, unless somebody will come suggest change.
I'm not 100% sure, but I think at the next Board of Health meeting, they're gonna vote on. There is a little in there.
I don't think you make any...
Well, no, it'll actually be the regulation for whether they're gonna ban tobacco sales anywhere other than standalone facilities with two licenses in Concord. If you're interested in that and want to weigh in, I don't know the date. I've done it. So any other, you're done with the updates on this?
So just another...
Any questions, go ahead.
Yeah, so on the school council, we still have three sub-policies, which you didn't review. When are you planning to do that? Because they are not consistent with this one.
I think they are consistent because they speak, here, this policy is speaking about regularity and the other one is actually saying what is regular. Yeah, but it's, there is no inconsistency. Regularly can be, so it's actually one complements the other. I know the superintendent because practically, in practice, the, at least the high school does not follow the existing policy. I know the superintendent has an interest and I think that he, superintendent means to bring it in the next, next week, no? The policy B D F A E 3. I think we talked about it.
Yep, it's on our mix list. Okay, we're moving to bring that next.
So I don't think there is actually any, it's just complementing one another and it's nice to actually treat them all together.
Right, and just monthly seems like a lot. If everybody agrees monthly is inappropriate, regular, you know, kind of... We're gonna have a recommendation. Okay, thank you. That's the only other comment I have.
Okay. So moving on, the capital article.
So if you all remember, last year, we asked Yale to do a feasibility study. So I asked them to go back and do three things from that. The first one was I asked them to take a look at the 104 parking spot numbers that they put together last January and update those costs. So the overall increase is approximately 7%, what they're projecting right now. If you remember a couple of meetings ago, I did say that I was hearing it was going up as high as 25%. I think I clarified that at the last meeting, that that is not necessarily the case. And they are pretty comfortable and confident that our numbers are going up about 7% and also including a 15% contingency. So I asked them to take a look at that. Don't want to stop there. Anybody ask?
Could you, I almost think it'd be best if we gave you the whole big picture and then take all your questions.
So that's the first thing I asked them to do. Then I asked actually for a proposal on the engineering, design, permitting, bidding, bidding and construction phases for the new 104 car lot, including the charging stations and lighting. Because when they did this feasibility study, they never did the design. So that was their estimated cost. So they went ahead and gave me a 15-page proposal. And that is going up about under 10% from what they were projecting with the numbers from last year. And then I asked, go a little step further, give me a timeline and a schedule of events if you were awarded this contract. Based on, I forgot what section of the Mass General law it is, but this is not something that we have to go out for bidding with. We don't have to bid this out.
The design.
The design portion.
Okay, question. So given that you can't do that step one until it passes town meeting.
That's part three of his story to tell tonight. So why don't you keep going?
So, stay tuned.
Stay tuned. So due to the increase to revenue that we're anticipating for this year,
I went over some numbers with Dr. Hunter and feel that if this committee votes to do it, I think, I would recommend that we absorb the design portion of this in the general fund for this year. About, so they're projecting about $78,000 for that. And then of that $78,000, $17,000 of that is post-award. Or if, so if the town does not vote on this, if you go forward and it does not pass, $17,460 would be subtracted from the $78,000.
So you're at about 60, 60, 60, 60.
So it would be $61,000 invested, basically. So that would basically give us, and we would have that in time, that that would give us more detailed information to bring to town meeting.
So we could lower the number.
So that's definitely good. I mean, the optics are good because you're kicking in. It's, this year's not parading budget, but you have room for, so there's no issue there. And you have more data, so it's all good.
More data would be great.
More data's always good, right?
Well, the one, if you don't mind me adding, the one thing I'd add to that, the design also allows us to engage in the permitting process with the town, which we know is going to be a pretty significant discussion with them. And the earlier we start, the better.
So would the town allow you to permit?
They need the design.
They permitted it anyway and they could always cancel in the back.
They need the design even have the conversation.
So I have a few questions.
Are we finished?
I think we're finished.
Yes.
So we talked last time and I asked you in the, in Yale, so it's original options. One of them was of 125.
Correct.
What's the story?
So the story is, one of their first designs had 125-spot design. If you, well, the ones that were on the committee, they had the berm area. They realized that they couldn't build into that. And also the soccer field was not regulation size inside of the track. So then they, they did away with that 125 design and reduced it to 104. The 125 was not reasonable.
Now, if you, first of all, you said that if they do not, if we do go the way you suggested, taking from our revenues. You said the difference would be if we not continuing, it would be Phase 6, construction phase services, 7460. What about the 9,400 site electrical, contractor, excavator equipment? I don't think this will be the stage for this year. Out of the 78, 190, there are 9,400 of other...
So are you looking, are you looking at their proposal or are you...
I am looking at their proposal.
So there's a...
Compensation.
So, okay, so phase, so they would do phases one through five?
Yeah, so we go away with 7,400, 600 of Phase 6, which is, but then we have the site electrical, lighting, contractor, excavator equipment, there's another 9,400 that I think that at this stage we can do it.
You're right.
And Phase 5, Phase 5, we are not going to need them to do big before we have...
So, yeah, it would really be, it would really be phases one through five would be approximately 50 grand.
Why 5? We're not going to start bidding before we have approval.
So we would have, we would, no, we can do that contingent on funding. So we can, that way...
That gives us a better idea.
That gives us better numbers to go in with.
So you can write right in there contingent on funding.
That's probably the most important thing.
Yeah.
I think as I read this, there was something in here that they don't, the lighting they have to, I got the sense the lighting, the electrical and lighting piece of the design had to be done by the subcontractor.
Yeah, but I don't see that we need it for the permitting.
When I, when I talked to them...
No, we probably do, because however, how we do the lighting is critical in that space because of the...
It wouldn't be the full amount. It would be reduced, they told me.
Yeah, so if we go back now to the other document, which is the financial estimate, just for us to understand, 848, 409 includes already the soft cost, which means the design, full and everything, and 15% contingency. So they actually estimated it to be, if we're lucky and everything works fine, a hundred thousand or less. I think it's important to...
And also, there might be, as far as what we would ask for at town meeting, would be the 50 or $60,000.
Really, that's, I have to remember that we're, the other thing is I want to understand item A, bonds, insurance, contractor overhead and profit. What's the 15%? If I understand it right, this is, they're putting 15% as overhead and profit. There's on top of the $17,000 that they put as Phase 6 in the, can you understand what I'm saying? They actually, in Phase 6, in their proposal, they're actually charging $70,000 and doing what here they put as 15% overhead. Which means the idea is usually a planning, a design firm charging 15% in order to oversee the project. And here they double charge.
So my recommendation is that we would have Gail back out to actually look at the whole scope of work. You're not gonna be able to answer all of this in as depth as you would probably like us to. We're happy to bring them out to do that in January. The only, the part that would be, the earlier discussion would be to, this is phased, right? So it's putting a warrant article forward with a number that is the highest you would need. We're trying to give you an option to lower it for the soft cost. We can have, we can have Gail come out here and let you ask all these questions as to where these numbers came from for the entire scope of the project, if that makes sense.
And there's actually one more question there that we have to have them answer. Maybe Jared, you can prepare them for this. When I read their contracts, what they actually say at the end is that the contract that they're offering, if we want to actually count to us, another contract is a longer process. So we have to understand their contracts well. But there are actually a list of, a long list of things that are not included here, which I guess they predict that they will not be needing. But they have to actually let us understand what of these they predict has got better chances of happening and then how much it will be. Because there's a very long list of things that are not included. One meeting and or two meeting and stuff like this. This is actually a little too specific for me. I feel uncomfortable with this very long list.
Are you saying in the list of things that's part of the $78,000 proposal or the estimate of the whole project?
Only on their designs, if you go to page eight, there's a long list, there's nothing, this and this and this and this.
Okay, okay, got it.
Many of those things could be big items.
Wouldn't there normally be a contract, like this is a contract, I guess, because you signed it, but like a real contract?
Yes.
Yes, this is a proposal.
That's actually a ready, that's a ready to sign contract.
Well, no, I mean, you wouldn't sign it then. You would, you would acknowledge it and move forward with a real contract, right? I mean, I think it should be, you know, layered up.
Yeah.
So the concept, so tonight, you're looking, from us, you're looking for kind of a general agreement or not of whether we want to move forward with looking at doing this design work sooner rather than later, correct?
Yes, because it's going to inform the warrant article number, you need to go with it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But there are these, you know, the things that I don't understand the size. How did it start as a mitigation design? It can be a huge or a small. I need to, you know, we need to understand.
I need what?
If you look at page eight, their proposal.
Yeah, the last two things.
For instance, habitat studies or mitigation design. So if this has to be done, first of all, I want to, they know that they actually did the feasibility study. I want to hear from them, what are the chances that we need it? If we need it, how much it will cost? I want to see our contingency, where does it go?
No, so I'm gonna push back a little on that because part of, those of you who are here are gonna remember some of how this played out. There's a... There's an awful lot of unknown factors, which is feedback we got both from Gale and from the DPW, and they came out to give us any idea of the parking, because of the water issues and the drainage issues and the impervious surface. There's a lot that they don't know until they actually do the design. So actually, it was at the school committee's request a year ago that the contingency never kept going up. So you can all think on that, but I just want to give you that piece of feedback that because there are so many unknowns on that campus, until the design work was actually underway, everyone felt pretty strongly, we need to be sure we weren't going to short ourselves.
Right, that's why there's a number for a drainage.
So, so let's, let's build our map a little. Let's say we, I don't know what layers it was, but let's say we, we vote to move forward a warrant article, we vote to approve a warrant article, and a warrant article is drafted for a certain amount. In parallel, and I don't know if we vote on it, but in parallel, operating funds are repurposed to get them started on the study. And in that study, I presume one of the things we'd want some clarity on, these items. And they come up with more costs, but we've already drafted the warrant article. So what happens if those costs then exceed the amount we've drafted for?
Yeah, we've been very clear with them, this needs to be the highest maximum they projected.
But to Yuval's point, and I don't, I don't think, you know, don't want to get in the weeds at this phase, but if there are significant cost garches on that bulletin list, have they really budgeted the amount?
I feel pretty strongly they have. They spent a lot of time with us last year, months preparing the study that they did a year ago, which, we, we are going to get better numbers than what we're getting from them because of the amount.
But, but, okay, so that's from the, you know, chances are kind of burning.
Well, can I, David, let me reiterate, or, or kind of validate what Laurie said about, when we had this discussion with them last year, when Gale was in here, those of us who were on the committee then pushed them really hard to give us the maximum possible number. So, they definitely heard that if they're going to come back with a number that we could have to spend, it can't go higher than that. So, I'm sure that legally, they have to put their list of this doesn't include items, but they definitely heard from us that if they bring back a number, it has to be the max spent.
But if, if, if it's wrong, and the warrant article is undercapitalized, it's more of a procedural question than a probability question.
Right.
Can we proceed and make up the difference out of operating?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, you can increase the article.
No, you can't do that, but you can kick in your own money.
Kick in from us.
You'd be kicking in.
I'm good with that.
So, and I, I want to actually add to this, my, my, I don't know. So, when I look at their compensation scheme, phase one and two are facility assessments, schematic design, engineering design. By the end of phase two, and before permitting and final design documents, they can already tell us a lot about the contingencies, the list of contingencies. True?
As to where that number came from?
No. There is a list, there is a list, in page eight, there is a list of contingencies that are not included.
The twenty-one on the.
Mitigation.
Yep.
Twenty, by the end of phase one and two, by the end of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, they should know more, and this should happen in January. Because if I go to the third document, they between January to March, they're already ready with all of it. So, we should actually push them here, and, you know, commit ourselves only to phase one and two, push them here to, to come as early as possible with answers about the contingencies. We'll be more comfortable in town meetings speaking about it, when we have much more information about the contingencies.
Can I, I think, and I don't know if we know the answer to this, but a number of, as I look at the list of exclusions, a number of the things on there would be things that likely would arise in the permitting process, which means, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think, and we can check this to be sure, but I think until we've gone to phase three, and gone through phase three, and had some input back from the permitting, the permitting options, we're not, they wouldn't be able to give us that.
Maybe.
And by then, they've spent a lion's share of the money.
At the end of the day, let's, it's, it's a partnership. They have an interest in it, that it will happen, we have an interest that it's happening, we just have to find a way to streamline it, that everybody will be happy, because they don't own twenty-six thousand. They own the whole project, you know? So we just have to give them a little bit, so, and we have to meet them, as you said, and ask them more questions.
Yeah, I have to say, it's not typical for us to bring vendors in here to meet with all of you, and they're troopers who want to serve us well, and they've, were here four, three or four times a year ago, and I know they'd come back gladly, they've been so responsive to us. So I think they're happy to come back and meet new members and answer new questions.
It's, it's, I don't think that this is a must, but I think it would be, you know, at the end of the, it's, it's, I totally understand the discourse, they've been even done it, but you have a whole new committee, and we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
But, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not saying that I look at it as something that has to happen, I think it's known that it will happen.
Okay.
Can you remind me, I should know the answer to this, but is Gale strictly designed, or would they, did they do the project?
I shouldn't know that too, but I feel like, no, they are, no, they are strictly designed.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. So some of these numbers, when we talked about.
Yeah, we would need a general.
Bond, insurance, contractor, overhead and profit, that's not, that's not Gale. That would be the select.
Oh, I, I know.
Which is why the bid's important, because that's how you're going to get bids back from the general contractors to bat up the number scales, putting.
Jared, can I ask you, did you, did you run, once you got, I know that you just got it now, but can, did you run those numbers in this presentation with the resources that we have, the public work?
Yeah, we've been talking, there are a lot of transition, so the people who are familiar aren't available to us right now.
It's going to be hard, yeah, we're not going to get much. I think we need to do this. And we, we should do this anyway in preparation, even if we were getting something from the town. Remember that the town was really more focused on the ring road than they were on the park.
And the good news, I think similarly, good parallel, that the, the design work that they did on the ring road isn't going to go obsolete on us, it will need updating, but we've still got a design to start with, which is really important. And the site, we'll be in the valleys once we do this for the park.
So, is it, can, go ahead.
No, we, we spoke about integrating in the design, all kind of solutions that will appeal to sustainability and stuff.
Charging stations.
Chargers are in there. Whatever, I mean, I'm not doing specific charger stations, but you, they are aware of this need.
Very much so.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether they're sustainability.
Well, they put it in there, cost, right?
Right. If I could just add this to, the other positive about doing this well beforehand to get that number is if we get this out to bid in late winter, early spring, we're going to have much better costs than if we waited till the day after town meeting. That's where the twenty-five percent number could come in, because everyone schedules their work in, you know, late winter, early, early spring, and by that time, it will be a little late.
That, that's true, as long as we all remember that all those companies that are doing roads are packed in the summer anyhow. It's, it's the two, three months without rain that they're, if we could have done it during the year, it would have been not in the summer months, that would have impacted.
Actually, all the paving in this general area was done in October, from what I can see.
The pavement's like the fall, because it's dry.
If you can actually, that's, if you can, that will actually impact the price, not, yeah.
So, can, I, I think, I don't want to, before, substantive things to talk about, it's great, but I, I, I think what I'm hearing is we're generally okay with this. And, are, you know, we are anticipating that we would vote on it next week.
You have to. You will need to vote a warrant article next week.
Do we also need to vote using operating funds to term on?
We were hoping.
Should do, should do.
If you're ready.
Must do, I mean, we're going to vote the article.
I mean, are we, that would be out of our normal procedure, but are we okay, you're talking about voting it tonight?
No, no, I don't care whether it's tonight or night or next week, I'm saying, I would vote the warrant article, and if it's a go, I would also vote the, using the operating funds.
And you're okay waiting till, rest of vote next week on this?
Yeah.
But I, but I would actually really encourage the administration to come, when we speak, vote, when we have to vote about the, using our funds, to speak to Gale and to try and be as conservative as possible with this. Because, at the end of the day, if, if we do this using our funds, and we fail in town.
You know, we're, we don't take the first number, they gave us just so you know.
There's been some negotiations.
I think that we should tread, we should tread carefully.
They thought their line went dead.
There's been negotiation, I believe.
Yes, there already.
So, so are we all good?
Good, and you have what you need from us on this for now?
Yes, so you'll see all, all this back next week, much more tidied up, so that you've got a warrant article to consider.
And if we can just post it as soon as possible, I know it's not nothing, but, so the public can understand what's going on with the.
Yes, you're, I mean, I have to turn an agenda around tomorrow for next week, so that'll, hopefully, all get together over the next couple of days.
And apropos of your reference to public understanding, and also our advocacy, I think we need to continue dialogue with you and understanding from you about continuing efforts of high school to mitigate the situation now, to look at the severity of it now. Because absent that, there's a presumption that everything's exactly the way it was a year ago, and that's something that I think we need to be confident about, or know, how has it shifted and why? Have we done anything differently, have students done anything differently? So that we can, in fact, entertain those probes, if you will, those, those questions from the public about alternatives.
Yeah, we should have a whole conversation. You don't want to think there's dramatic shifts, or we still wouldn't be having the same need? There's discussions happening that would be precursors to, to the thoughtfulness, but I, it's, it's probably a whole separate.
This is one solution toward a multifaceted issue, and there's other solutions that we need to make certain people understand. Thank you.
Okay, good.
So, moving on to the vote, final approval of CCHS trips. Do you have any comments before we start on this? Not many, yes, but.
I would just want to update to be sure that you received the Ecuador trip. The teachers, after seeing the responses they had from February, put out a quick feeler to see if they would get more interest if they were to move it to the Q5 frame in June. And indeed, they are getting a lot more interest, so their request tonight would be to consider final approval of the Ecuador exchange trip to approximately June eighth through the twentieth, depending on when those Q5 days are formally set, which is always active, snow season, so.
So it's still twelve days, but.
Yes, just at the end of the week.
So I would, I would suggest that we take it out of the consent agenda and vote on it separately.
I'm going to let Bali.
Yeah, so what I'm going to propose here is that we do a consent agenda on these, and rather than me read off all of these, if, could just let, tell me if you have one you would like to pull out?
Sure.
I know, Yuval, you want to pull out the Paris trip. Is that still the case?
Yes, yeah, pretty much.
And.
And Ecuador.
Ecuador. Anybody have any others that they would care to pull out?
Is this the full, this is the full roster then of trips?
Yes.
I thought there were more trips?
Yeah.
Couple dropped.
Couple dropped.
Couple dropped, okay. And just to recap, we preliminarily approved these, right? We required that they get their ducks in a row, which court helped them with, and that's all lined up, right?
And then you've reviewed all these.
I have had both conversation and a great deal of documentation sent to me. Some, you have the portion through court's work that we agreed would come to you. I have a whole other stack of supplemental documents that have come to me.
I think in the case of the April Japan Sister City delegation, we already voted about it five times at least.
Because they have to.
Positive.
So, from a broader, you know, stepping back, the general theory here is we'll approve these, or maybe some discussion. Approve them, let everybody go forward, and then in the spring, we're going to take up a broader, we'll get this.
Not before, at some point. At some point after December.
Well, be after Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Fair enough, kind of.
After New Year.
After the New Year.
Oh, after New Year. Twenty.
I was all excited to me, I saw that you guys are meeting on the seventh.
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm here on Christmas.
That might have to be a joint meeting.
Okay, I'm good.
So, I would like a motion to approve the following trips by consent agenda. The US High School Nationals, twenty-twenty April Japan Sister City delegation, Chinese Exchange Program and Cultural Trip, the Outdoor Club Romney Rock Climbing, the Quebec Montreal, the Central Europe, Poland and Hungary World War II and Cold War, the Presidential Traverse White Mountains, New Hampshire, the Earth Science Canadian Rockies, and the Denmark Exchange Program.
So, seconded, sorry.
So, any discussion on the consent? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice having you. So, let's talk about the Ecuador exchange first, and as Superintendent just highlighted, we're just, we're talking about moving the dates.
So I actually want to say what I think about this trip. I think that this is an exemplary trip, an exemplary presentation. And it's, but I thought that we need to put it out, because we cannot vote on it, as this we had to change the. But if you look at it, it actually answers everything we wanted. It's cultural exchange, it's biology, it's amazing sights, believe me, I've lived in Ecuador for years. The Cotopaxi, the, I mean, everything is in here, plus homestays, cultural competency, languages, financial aid, and for twelve days of a trip to Ecuador, plus the Galapagos Island, which is one of the most expensive destinations to travel to. It's a very reasonable cost. I wanted actually to commend this trip and actually use it as an exemplary to what we want to see in the district. And I recommend that we approve.
Thank you.
Any other conversation?
Can I just point out to clarify that it is an exchange, and so although the trip of CCHS students going there changes to June, the plan remains the same for Ecuador students to come here in April. So now the Ecuador students would come here first, and then our students would go over there.
And actually, the budget includes the hosting.
Yes, it does.
Of the coming.
It's hosting expensive.
It's really practical, exemplary.
So, I would take a motion.
I would move to approve the trip to, the exchange program to Ecuador that includes Ecuadorian students coming in here in April, and CCHS students going to Ecuador in June.
I'm glad you seconded.
And that, can I, can I ask you to include the change of date from our initial?
To include the, the change of date, which is CCHS students going to Ecuador in June, sometime approximately June eighth to twentieth, depending on when the Q5 dates fall.
I see.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice having you. So let's move to the Paris trip. Paris in depth. Yuval, you wanted to pull this out, so I'll, I'll speak first.
Tell us, tell us why you'd like to pull it out.
Because I think this is precisely the opposite to what I said about the Ecuador trip. And I'm very happy to actually put them one against other. This is a trip for five and a half days. It says eight, but it's actually five and a half days, if you look at the schedule. In-depth to Paris, only to, actually, two and a half days of Paris, and three days out of Paris. It's an expensive trip, it now is seven, three hundred, seven hundred, it was proposed to us for three hundred and five hundred. It's more expensive than proposed in the initial. It has an extremely high ratio of chaperones to students, one to six, because the vendor is actually authorizing it. So, but the fact that the vendor is authorizing it, we have to understand what it means. It means that the kids that are going are paying for it. Okay, instead of using these vendors' fees to actually offset the price or prepare, or offer subsidies, we actually offer more shutout. It's the only trip of everything that was put in front of us that does not actually name. It's the only trip of, everything was put in front of us, that does not actually name any of the chaperones. It's the only one. All the others dead, all the chaperones. The vendor is, I mean, it's a trip instead of, this is for me the worst example of how to use a vendor. You know, it's a vendor that if you research him on the internet, it has hundreds of extremely negative, scandalous commentaries about them, of subpar, especially subpar instruction, subpar accommodation, subpar trip leaders, not the teachers, but the ones they provide. But if you read well, it's, the main thing is how bad they are according to the reviews on the internet in solving problems when problems occur, with flights, with accommodation, stuff. It's a, I don't know how to say the name, a vanilla type of trip. There's nothing in this trip I looked and for a single twist to the regular Paris, it's instead of in-depth, I would call it the shallowest touristy trip to Paris.
Don't you record it, tell us what you read.
You know, and at the end of the day, it's, there's nothing here that I personally would have liked to see in our district. Now, this is too late, and here I'm going to criticize us. I think that at this stage in this process, school committee was not decisive enough. We did not give clear instruction to the superintendent, we did not give it in time, and I don't think that we should stop this trip now. Okay? I know that this trip already, people pay for it, I was, the enrollment actually is close to this trip. We had a, as a parent in the community, I know that my kids actually got a text saying that by December 1st, so people actually paid for this trip before we gave it an approval. Enrollment is close, people already paid. I don't think we should stop it. But what I suggest, I think that it's safe, from everything we've heard about trips until now, that there'll be at least a couple of committee members that will vote for it. I suggest to those of us that do not like this type, to see this type of things to abstain. I go into roll call, and by this, to actually send a clear message of what we want to do in the future. I don't suggest that we will stop this trip from going. But I wanted to say that this is really the last thing we would like to see as school-sponsored activity.
Can I jump in? Can I just correct something very quickly? I don't think it's necessarily the last thing that we would want to see, it might be the last thing that you would want to see. Because I disagree.
This is, I know, I know.
It's not, it's not the last thing we as a school committee would like to see.
I totally agree, I apologize. Before I said "I", and now I said "we", but it's the wrong.
Okay.
It's not you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to...
I, Yuval made a point regarding chaperoning, so level of chaperoning. And I have been to Paris with three kids, actually, there was four of us, because we had, our guide was an exchange young member that came to US and in exchange she, she took us around Paris. It's a very tricky city. It's very easy to lose somebody on the metro. We've gotten separated, and our guide, an American guide that was a close friend, was having panic attacks anywhere they took us, because it's a very congested place. It's a, it's a, things happen very quickly. It's very easy to get separated from the group. So, having high level of chaperones is mandatory actually for those places. And when we are looking at trips, and we are looking, when we are looking at trips, there has to be people that are running those trips, they understand what are the requirements to keep our kids safe. So some areas, you will, you might be able to take carbo chaperones for your 16, 15 kids, but having many chaperones in congested areas really translates into safety. Leading some of the trips for Girl Scouts, you really need to think about what happens when things do go wrong. If a child gets sick, if a child hurts themselves on the trip, you cannot leave a group of students alone. You need to be able to stay with a student or get help for the student, and you have to have enough level of chaperones to maintain control of and safety of other students. And if somebody else gets hurt, you need to have enough people. So, I think the, you know, I believe that you will look at those levels and the cost will be higher. And it's absolutely justified. So, for us as a school committee members, we should not be making those recommendations.
Just to answer that.
I wanna let other people have a chance to talk. Cynthia, do you have anything?
I would just say that, again, what you all saying is so late in the process for us to make this kind of judgment without introducing either a change process, a new process, different guidelines. We don't use these vendors, we use these vendors. I think, you know, we don't know, I, you know, looking on the internet, reading a few reviews, I don't know if that's the proper, you know, that's necessarily reflects the reputation, the current reputation of the company. I don't know. But I would rely on the superintendent that she would be comfortable with the vendors running our trips. And of course, she wouldn't put our students in harm's way. So my opinion is at this point, this is final approval. This isn't us to interject our opinion about the process in general for this year. And that's all I'm saying is that whether we, this flavor of trip is our favorite thing versus the Ecuador trip, I understand what you're saying in terms of the way it's constructed, its goals, it's, you know, these are two different approaches for sure. And, you know, if we wouldn't impose a different process, a different, you know, set of rules or regulations, working with the superintendent in a principal next year, maybe that will happen, I'm not sure. But for tonight, I think we need to move forward with our approval.
Court?
I'm very pleased that you've all put the responsibility on us. And I'm pleased that we are critiquing this very, very carefully, because I think we should. I think it's our duty. I rely on the superintendent to help the teachers understand that our concern is about the welfare of our kids and the educational quality of these programs, the way they are distinguished and are superior to other programs, and that indeed, it's all about teacher support, not anything less than that. So if there's any misunderstanding, I think it's contingent upon you to, you know, convey that we really do have the district's interests sincerely at heart. I did pull out another concern about this particular trip, and that was, because you know, we voiced a concern about equity, access, inclusion, and so on. We wanna lower the bar to entry to these wonderful opportunities. In looking at fundraising, this one spells out efforts on behalf of one subgroup at our high school. And I would hope that instead, we get smarter about that and say, this has to be needs-based. It doesn't matter where you live, doesn't matter who you are, what matters is your, your capacity to join. So I think we just ought to be more sensitive about that in the future, and I'm sure we can be. I hear Yuval about the abstention for fear that it would be misinterpreted down at 500 Walden Street. I don't intend to do that. I think we have to go ahead and make sure that these teachers have all the, all the support they need. But I think the very fact that you bring it up is a way to express that this is important to some of us around this table. And I'm glad that a few of us are doing some homework on this, and we'll be working with Lori. We'll be learning from other districts we've already started to learn about any ways that we can further enhance these pretty remarkable opportunities.
Okay. I hope it's detailed, four very quick points. But one, a couple of you have mentioned that we do rely on our superintendent to be the expert here, and I wanna point that out, because I do feel like this is really important. These teachers have brought a trip that they had provoked, proposed to the superintendent, and she has said, yes, we think this is a good idea, and part of our job is to ask her to do that and to trust her. And I need to point that out, because I think it's very important. As well as the teachers, you know, these, these are highly respected teachers who've brought incredible opportunities and are volunteering their time to do this for a reason. And I do see educational value in it. Just in terms of the comparison, there are two, yes, they're two different types of trips, and I'm not gonna go into the value of either, but I think there is value in both, and different types of value. But I think there is value, and therefore I feel very comfortable approving this trip. Just because questions about EF were brought up, I did a little bit of my own research, and yes, you find stories online, but I don't feel like that's something that we can rely on. I spoke to a couple of people who have worked with EF and had great experiences and great problem-solving, and so I feel very comfortable with them. And lastly, I know you're not saying we shouldn't approve it, but just to reiterate that these teachers and teams have been planning these trips based on our initial approval, and therefore I strongly believe we need to give them our final approval, so that they can make their trips happen.
Yes, we agree.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So, going in sort of order, on that last point, I completely agree. I mean, this has been a disjointed process. Administration clearly has a message that we're not gonna put up with it anymore, but this is, this cart is, you know, the horse is out of this barn. So I do believe we have to approve it. I have a question for the parliamentarians here. If, if by any reason, there was less than a quorum that voted yes and the rest abstained, what does that mean?
It would still be yes.
Say that again.
I mean, to his, to Yuval's...
Yuval suggested that people abstain.
Suggested that people abstain. Let's say three vote yes and four abstained. Does the motion carry?
Yes.
With three of seven? I just wanna know.
I would say yes. The V majority.
Okay, well, majority what? I don't know, it's a point, but it's irrelevant, I think.
Not the message I think we should be sending.
No, I agree. Okay. So, I think that it's also not my choice of, you know, favorite trip. And I do think that we have to add vendor qualification to the court, you know, list of things. There needs to be a vendor qualification process. There are enough bad reports on the internet that one should take notice of EF. Furthermore, there are allegations that there's some kind of point system or bonus system for the teachers, and that should be absolutely, there should be sunshine on that, and it should not be permitted.
I'm gonna let you finish and then tell you the work that's happened before the proposal came.
Well, go ahead, and if you wanna expand on that point.
Yes.
You've probably got a couple of things going.
I have a lot.
So why don't you finish your...
I know, so go ahead.
Finish your...
So, and just another question, the chaperones are these teachers or parents typically?
Teachers.
Teachers, okay. So I guess the last point, which is really, you know, segue into the future meeting, is just, this is an example that, you know, again, if we're gonna tackle it at a big picture level in the future, we're a privileged community with privileged kids, and they will all have ample opportunities to do these sorts of trips with families, college, whatever. Whereas the service trips, well, I get to say my point, you can grow. The service trips and the exchange programs in particular are experiences that they are unlikely to replicate outside of the school environment, and I absolutely, I just wanna say I support those completely. So that's my point.
I, I am confident that the superintendent has had discussions with EF over time and that we are, we are comfortable as an organization with them providing this trip. Understand there are bad reviews, there are some things that have gone on that seem to be allowed or are misunderstood in other districts. We forbid our teachers from taking any sort of reward back. I think the teacher actually asked to have more chaperones than less, wasn't just because they were being offered. And, you know, I think we are going to have, if we have this many trips, we're gonna have very different experiences across the trips. I can see parents who would not want their, they wouldn't want their kids going to Ecuador or the Galapagos unless they were with them. You know, some of these kids are, you know, 15 years old. Japan is a very long trip. Our daughter took it twice, and it's, you know, I mean, but you need a week to recover when you get back. That's just, you know, a bridge too far for some parents. And, you know, is this a kind of a milquetoast trip? Yes. Does it give an opportunity for a kid whose family can't afford to fly four people over to Paris and go around and see what's going on? Absolutely. You know, I don't think it's our place to decide whether or not a trip is, is right for somebody. These teachers are volunteering their time to do these trips, and I respect them for doing that. There is obviously interest in this kind of trip. So I caution us to be too prescriptive in what we do going forward on trips. I think in the aggregate, we should be looking for a very, very broad and, and sort of trip type and trip experience and cost. And, and I think we, you know, I agree totally that the experience of an exchange trip is phenomenal. It is a lot of work, and to have all of these kids who are gonna have the benefit of taking trips do so on an exchange, I think is probably above and beyond what we're able to do. I think, you know, if teachers understand the benefit of exchange trips, and if, if they felt they could handle the responsibility of that, then they may do it. I also know that having been a host a number of times for the Japan trip, you know, it's, it's a challenge for families who host these kids. And if all of our trips were exchange trips, I think that would be a heavy burden on the parent community. And my guess is, we'd be strapped to find people who would, who would volunteer to do that. So I think we have to look at what we offer in the aggregate for a school our size. And, you know, I think we do a good job. I think we are, and I, my hat's off to folks who are working on giving us an opportunity to improve our process and to make suggestions. But I, and I look forward to that discussion. I've been a, I've been a detractor of some of our approaches in the past, and I hope that we are able to identify and come up with some solutions. But as far as this group of trips, and I'm certainly comfortable with this one. I think, you know, there are many sides to perceive this from. And when the day is done, parents and students make decisions about whether to participate in these trips or not. And just as we just saw in the Ecuador trip, if we were gonna do this in February, we wouldn't be having the trip. So we make an adjustment. So, that's, that's my feeling personally, as a member of the committee. Go any further than that. Why don't you tell us what you wanna tell us, and if there are other comments after that, we'll take them.
Sure. In terms of that trip specifically, I, EF is probably the most vetted vendor that we use in the district. I met with them personally prior to this discussion a year ago. We've had the conversations about the incentives and been very clear with teachers that they're not taking them, and had the ethics law in my hand when I did it. I've met with the teacher proposing this trip three times now, asking all the same questions you've asked, the kind of answers I was satisfied with, a bunch of which you've already talked through. So I think, I think there is a market for this trip, and I think we're...
and I think we're, we're not recognizing our entire demographic. My kids haven't been to Europe. It just never, it just hasn't happened. There are almost 20 kids signed up for this trip. And I think we need to understand that there needs to be a range of opportunities for kids as well as cost and all the other things that you're talking about. I think my final comments, we, I'm doing the best I can to help teachers hear a message of support. But I'll be honest, they're watching, watching some of your comments and the time it's taking to even get to final approval on trips that started months ago. And there's, there's concern among them about something that they're doing out of a passion for kids and travel and the educational opportunities it can bring and the time they give up from their own families and their frankly incredible responsibility they take. And there's some brewing, is it worth it? Because this isn't feeling, I just need to say, it's not feeling supportive to them. It's not. And I know that isn't your intent likely, and I continue to say that and say that. And just going into the next round, I think we need to be cognizant that I'm, I want to be sure I have trips for you to consider in the spring.
Right.
And I think if we don't be just really careful in the way we talk and frame this and the amount of time we devote to it, and all of them probably anecdotal messages and unintended messages, that we just need to be really careful. This is not something we mandate our people to do. This is not something that's part of a curriculum. This is something people to choose and volunteer to do. And they can just as quickly volunteer not to. So that's, that's the heartfelt ask that I have. Because I feel like it's kind of playing out a little bit again tonight, even with an approval at the outcome, which I think is what's about to happen. So I'm grateful you're going to do that. The kids need us to do that. There's a lot of energy about all of these trips. And I want to focus on that and then we'll take, catch our breath and come back to the big picture conversation. But there's, there's definitely some pieces to consider as we move forward. Thank you for sharing that, by the way. It's important for us to keep in mind.
I think what I've heard is a fairly consistent, that's not a third word. People seem to be in a place where they know how they're going to vote on this. So I'd like to take that into account as we think about more discussion.
Just, I want to clarify one thing. I, I know that it might not sound like this, but take my word for it. I have high appreciation to the teachers that are doing it. I actually think precisely as the superintendent described, it's a decision to take 20 kids to trip abroad, it's a responsibility. My issue is with the value we, it is school sponsored trip. The value we offer by working with vendors. And, you know, we're offering, I think, in this case, and that's why I'm actually speaking about this trip as opposed to many others. I think we offer very high price for very small, very little time value, the way I look at it. And that's my only concern. And the fact that we don't actually, we do not offer it to everybody for $3,700 without any subsidies. I hope that in the future we have a mechanism in the district that will actually, as described in the Ecuador trip, that that will not be a barrier, which means the financial situation will not be a barrier to everybody to participate. So I, as I said, I totally agree with everything was said and I didn't think for a second we have to stop, as I very clearly said originally. We just want to, I want to emphasize the message that I tried to send, I tried to send from the beginning of this process about the educational value per cost in a school sponsored trip.
So can I have a motion to approve the?
I think we did it, didn't we? Or no?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, never mind, sorry. I would move to approve the trip to Paris to happen, sorry, the date's June 15th to June 21st.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, moving on.
Do you need to move the band trip to the upper school thing? I don't know.
Well, no, we, just because we're in the, if you can.
I don't think it'll be long.
If you didn't oblige us here, just let us.
Thirty seconds.
Get this done and.
Can I vote?
You can, we might not can.
So as you all know, we signed information and gave an initial approval to the CMS band trip to Quebec back when we did initial approvals. Once again, we have all the follow-up information. I would take a motion to approve the CMS band trip to Quebec from May 1st to May 4th, 2020, with the condition that a signed district liability insurance waiver is received from all participants.
I second.
So moved.
Okay, Cynthia moved it, now you're seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this one?
Yes, I just wanted to say that it's an excellent example. They, they had an initial plan, much higher price tag. They met, they found a way to actually reduce it considerably. They're organizing, with the parent group, they're organizing fundraisers, they're open. There's lots of actual involvement around it. And I think it's, and once again, and the description, the way it was presented, once again, it's an exemplary procedure.
Yes, it's fabulous, the details of the process.
And I think that we should single it out and make it very clear to everybody that we read it and see what they did.
Great, thank you.
Has anything changed significantly? Just, we're getting more details in, is the price lower?
Well, because they reviewed, they revised it when they sent it back to you.
The price is lower.
It is lower, they condensed it to one city in Canada.
Okay.
So yes, they, they've heard your feedback and keep tweaking. We have 89 of 95 kids signed up to go out of the band.
Wow.
So there's a high level of engagement. The music association is actively still.
And there is the, the parent group that actually created the same nonprofit and are actually doing lots of activities.
Yes, this music. Seeing the auction.
There's an auction going on now.
So the other thing, I just wanted to make sure that we, when we look at their proposal, they're speaking about parents as chaperones and we just have to see that they accord it, of course.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstaining? All right, that's five to none.
Take a motion to adjourn the region?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you guys. The five of us will continue, we don't have too much to go.
Next week.
Yep.
I know, exactly.
Can we take just two minutes?
You need two minutes? All right, two minute break. Good, no, we're waiting. And we're back, welcome back. We have just the Concord School Committee meeting still in session. We're going to do a quick CMS building committee update. I will do a high level of that at our last meeting. We had SMNA at our meeting, it was very exciting. So we have our designer, they walked us through basically some of their thoughts and plans and potential timelines. I won't get into all the details of all that because it's still yet to be discussed in detail at the building committee level. But it's very exciting to have them on board. And they really, clearly they've done their homework because they are really knowledgeable about where we are and where we're going.
Yeah.
So it's great to have them there and, and moving us forward. There's other work going on right now. In the past couple of weeks, it's been more subcommittee work. The, of the building committee, the finance subcommittee has met. The education, is that what we're calling it? Subcommittee is about to start the educational visioning, planning. Communications, the communications subcommittee is actually going to announce a meeting soon, next week probably. And like I said, tomorrow, we're having a coffee and conversation with the League of Women Voters, with their education committee. So that's kind of where communications is. That's very high level. Did you want to add anything?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Two pieces. One is that the leadership team in the building committee is also meeting this week. We're going to do some high level discussions of schedule.
Good, great.
To bring probably some kind of recommendation to next week's full committee meeting. Because really determining the schedule is going to drive everything else. So we're having some conversations to prepare for next week. And I did talk with MSBA yesterday, we have not been invited in. So I think we.
Surprised.
Yeah, we're not surprised. But just to start to share with the community, we did hear back formally, the letters in the mail to say so on paper.
Yep.
But we are not invited into this year's project.
Yes, and I would say with thanks to them for coming out and visiting us and giving us all the time that they ever have.
Where, what's going on with the sustainability stuff?
Can I answer that? Because I have a couple of interesting conversations with committee members individually since the real goal was to bring on board a design team that had the expertise to, to know that that, those were the goals at the outset of the project. So what, maybe I'm answering your question in a backwards way. What I'm feeling from the entire committee is now that that designer's been selected with a strong level of confidence, that they've got the right people to continue to have that mindset going into the design of the project, we're really shifting to educational programming. And all of it is going to be the charge to the design team. Now that they know what the sustainability goals are, at least at a high level of what was in the RFS, now we need to define for them what the educational goals are going to be and then they're going to be looking to meld the two. And that's going to be where we start having some really interesting conversations.
That presentation, I think, did clarify all those things.
Yeah.
Because they, very, very strong presentation about sustainability, but their focus now is, is, you know, having these sessions with the, not the building committee's leadership team, but the middle school and lower leadership team to pursue that education piece, which.
In fact, that was the selection dilemma between very, very capable firms was, who was going to quote unquote lead more on the education side? Who was going to quote, lead more on the sustainability side? And I think it's fair to say, we, we decided we needed the expert help on sustainability more than on education because we're well endowed with smart people around educational vision at our middle school.
I'm confident, SMNA, in support of that. So it's feeling really good right now. The part where I knew we had sort of turned that corner, we were at a site visit and Heather had to ask the sustainable question. And I was like, with a lot of the really, you know, sustainable committee members present. And I thought, wow, that means they're confident that we've got the right designer that's going to come with that umbrella right from the get-go, so.
I was going to say, I almost feel like, I feel like there was a collective sigh of relief from, from those who have been advocating for sustainability that now, okay, now we have the right people in place, now we don't have to keep advocating. It's just about working together.
Yeah, and it's becoming very balanced, which is really very good.
Yeah, it's great.
So your next meeting is Thursday the 19th?
So our next meeting, I was, yeah, just reminded of that. Next week, Thursday the 19th.
7:30.
7:30 AM, right here.
With a full room.
I noticed that.
It is a very full room. Even this room, which is huge, it is packed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once we have the OPM and the designer here, it's, the room is full. But we do have space for observers, so everybody's welcome.
Yeah, the committee, it takes two thirds of.
The committee, it's a most impressive meeting.
A lot of people at the table now.
Yeah, a lot of people at the table.
And it really helps that they're all being recorded, I have to say.
Good, I'm glad.
Because it's not about the easiest time for everybody. Some people can make it.
It's not the easiest time for all of us, but I get it.
There's a reason I haven't done that.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Great, thanks for that, that's a good one. Then we just move on to vote to approve the CPS capital plan. So this is a plan that you've shown us before.
It has not changed since the last time.
Nothing has changed since the last time we saw it.
No.
Then first I would just take a motion to approve the CPS capital plan as presented by Mr. Stanton and as attached here on our agenda.
So moved.
Is there further discussion on that?
I just, I don't have a problem. I just have a comment in moving forward with the process to town meeting. If we could put any kind of numbers on what, especially the ERUs, because that's the biggest number, might potentially save us. That'd be, I assume they would, but I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be great, to be able to tell people how much they're going to save us, certainly.
We're not just replacing it with the same thing, we're fixing sort of problem, right?
Correct.
Yes, this is going to make us more efficient.
Yes, there's no doubt it's going to be more efficient.
That would be good in the presentation.
It's a great point.
Definitely. And I'll just point out as usual that as always, we have $100,000 in here just to, as, as safety net at the middle school buildings. And we hope that's enough until we get to.
No, 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 you hope you will need it.
We hope you will need it.
Have our hopes in the right order.
Well, yes. So you say I'm always an optimist, but I'm saying, I hope it's enough.
Yeah, so this week's version of that story was a water main issue at PBD that they opened it up today, it was out in the loading dock. And we had a scale of scenarios and the best case scenario happened that the break was right at the edge of the loading dock, so they didn't have to excavate any further or go digging or, and the water was only on for an hour, so.
Woo, thank goodness.
I know, people think I'm staging things, I don't have to. I just don't have to.
Do you have any number on that?
More than I thought.
So basically, we're eating it.
Insurance claim, I'm hearing anywhere from five to 10.
Yeah.
Oh, it's put, would it be covered by insurance?
Maybe, we're not sure.
Or partially.
Part of it, we'll look into that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So that was a Saturday night thing for us.
How could that be covered by insurance, freezing? Weather related?
Weather related, yeah. Ian's already looked into it, so we've got an answer back.
And thank you to.
Everything we tried.
The person who went to check.
Absolutely, we're, that, those are the only two schools we do weekend building. Absolutely. We're, that, those are the only two schools we do weekend building checks in and there's at least
Good thing we do.
At least twice we've been grateful because we found running water over the weekend that we would have walked into on Monday morning. So really grateful for that custodial staff and that Yes. and we compensate them, but they're still obviously giving up their weekend to come do it and really grateful for their service.
Definitely, definitely.
We need to vote.
Great, yes. Any further discussion on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or extensions? Just in case. They just ask for that all the time, right? Make it happen a bit again.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. We did, I think. Cynthia seconded.
Yes.